Good morning. Go Mox. I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting April the 2nd, 2025. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mr. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Mr. Chauncey?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Hilton?
Here.
Dr. Highlander?
Here.
Dr. Mackey?
Here.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Chairman Eversole?
Here. Imocation and pledge will be conducted by Commissioner Hilton, so if all would please rise. Thank you Chair. Today, our prayer will be handled by Reverend Jason Gadda, Senior Pastor at First Sentinary United Methodist Church. Good morning. Let us pray. Most gracious and holy God, we thank you for the gift and the blessings of this beautiful day and the wonderful way in which we're able to see the transition of seasons and the beauty all around us. We ask your blessings and presence upon all of our government officials, whether here locally in the city and county, whether in the state or across the nation. May you give them direction and guidance they need to lead us and do so well that's in the best interest of our areas. Guide us and direct us as we meet this day, as you bring forth your glory to all of us and all that we do may be bringing honoring glory to you. We ask these things through your precious and holy name. Amen. If you will face and salute the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, before we get into agenda, we're going to call a legal meeting. Legal meeting with the Commission, Attorney's Office, Mayor Womp, Ms. Farnell, and our Chief Operating Officer. So we'll take a quick moment to go to the Commission conference room for Okay, before we get into agenda, we're going to call a legal meeting. Legal meeting with the Commission, Attorney's Office, Mayor Womp, Ms. Farnell, and our Chief Operating Mr. Smith. Mr. Chairman.
Here. So no presentations today, but that will move forward to minutes needing entered and recorded for the recess meeting on March the 12th, 2025. Agenda session, March the 12th, 2025, the regular meeting on March the 19th, 2025, what would be the will of the commission. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hilton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Eversol.
Yes. We also have three reports to enter into the record, Mr. Clerk.
Will do, Mr. Chairman.
That will move into resolutions. We will begin with Resolution 425-1. Madam Clerk, read caption.
Resolution 425-1, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions, the bonds and oaths of notaries previously elected, and the oaths of deputy sheriffs.
Move for approval. Mr. Baker made the motion. Mr. Smith's making the motion. See no lights, see no one standing, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, 425-1 passes, 425-2.
Resolution 425-2, a resolution to approve a plan for reappraisal as submitted by the Hamilton County Assessor of Property as required by Tennessee Code Annotated Section 67-5-1601.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded the motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call. Hang on, Commissioner Becker, I'm sorry, had a late light, sorry. Commissioner Baker.
Uh, Mr. Haynes, you're true to your word, I'm already getting phone calls, so I just want to thank you for that. You don't, you don't need to get up, you don't need to.
Marty Haynes, Assessor of Property, uh, I'm sure you are getting text messages, phone calls, emails, whatever. I would encourage you to tell your constituents to call my office, 209-7990. That's all they gotta do, call the office.
Oh, I think I gave you your personal number, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
No, I'm kidding.
That's fine, if you do, that's fine. I'll, I'll handle those phone calls as well, but, uh.
But you're right, I'm getting the calls, I'm sure everybody else is.
Yeah, so.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, see no more lights and no one standing for comment, so, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hilton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Eversol.
Yes, 425-2 passes, 425-3.
Resolution 425-3, a resolution making an appropriation to Saudi-Daisy Vietnam Veterans Foundation in the amount of $1,000 from general fund tribal discretionary monies as allotted to District One.
Move to a pro.
Second.
Who was it, made the, Commissioner Mackey made the motion? And who was the second? Mr. Beck was the second. See no lights, no one standing for comments or roll call.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hilton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Eversol.
Yes, 425-3 passes, 425-4.
Resolution 425-4, a resolution making an appropriation to Saudi-Daisy Trojan Fund in the amount of $1,000 from general fund tribal discretionary monies as allotted to District One.
Second.
Commissioner Smith made the motion, Commissioner Beck seconded the motion. See no lights, no one standing for comment, roll call.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hilton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Okay, move to Compliance Task Force, we have Resolution 425-5.
Resolution 425-5, a resolution transferring the Risk Management Department from the Hamilton County Attorney's Office to the Human Resources Department.
Motion to approve, second. Commissioner Graham made the motion, there's Commissioner Chauncey, is that correct? Second. Okay, Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, um, I'd just like to update the commission that since our office brought this forward, um, your, the intent was to simply place risk management back to HR where it was. Conversations that we've had with commissioners have led us, we think, to a better proposal, and that would be the risk management report to the chief operating officer, who in our case has a background around risk management, and, uh, and we think that would be a, uh, an appropriate path forward, and so I would ask, uh, commissioners to consider making an amendment here, um, and, uh, and that would, I think, please, both the, uh, the administration and majority of the commission.
Okay, Commissioner Hilton.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a motion to amend this resolution and move it under the COO.
Second.
If, if that pleases the commission.
Okay, so we've got a motion to amend to, from HR to COO, Commissioner Hilton, seconded by Commissioner Smith.
Okay. Commissioner Highlander. Good, uh, may I ask the attorney a question? Mr. Attorney, how does this, uh, what's legality on this, how do you feel? Do you feel comfortable with this?
Commissioner, it's, my feelings don't really matter, this is a decision that you all need to make, the risk, risk management has been under the county attorney's office for, I think it's since 2022. It was brought over because that was the feeling of the administration at that time, that was the place for it to be, uh, so, and it has worked well in our office, and so that's, that's my assessment of it, but my, my feelings doesn't really matter.
I, well, perhaps, perhaps I shouldn't have said feelings, your legal assessment of it. Of the, of the need and, uh.
The reason it was brought over into the attorney's office is because it's so much akin to, uh, what we do. It's, it's a matter of analysis of risks that are presented to the commission, to the county, uh, handling of claims, and that's the reason why it was brought, it's more akin to that. I believe in a, in a recent, uh, work session that you all had, it was, it was indicated that it is a matter more so with, uh, it's out of, it's not a matter of human resources as much as it is in the legality portion of it, so that, I think that's been shared with you all.
Thank you, I, I do know Chief Roddy's had some experience in this area, so I, I do understand that, appreciate it. We're looking, making some moves, I, I'm wondering for jumping the gun, doing it this early, but anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, in my mind, I thought after we had that work session, in my mind, I thought this would be more appropriate, uh, appropriately handled by, by a committee that we had set up, uh, under Commissioner Sharp, and, uh, whatever happened to that notion? Can anybody tell me what happened?
Sharp's lights on, I'm sure he'll answer shortly. Mr. Sharp.
Um, well. My, my, uh, obviously my perspective is that we should wait for the professionals to provide their, um, legal advice, guidance as to how the county should move forward before we make a change. Based on the conversation that I just listened to, um, we should have some form of recommendation in 30 days, I'm not sure why we would make a change today, uh, when we know that we're gonna have a recommendation possibly for something quite different in 30 days from now and change again. I was really hoping to avoid this conversation today, um, because I believe that this move creates significant liability for the county, and as a fiduciary for the county, I have a responsibility, uh, to help avoid liability for the county. However, I feel like I'm kind of between a rock and a hard place here. I have responsibility to the county, I also have responsibility to the citizens of this county.
So you want to table this for 30 days?
Yes, I would, I would move that we table this, uh, until we have, um.
Defer?
A, 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 a proposal, uh, from, uh, Baker Donaldson, who has so graciously offered to, um, provide an assessment for the county, um, but if, I, I don't want to yield the floor and somebody call the question, as has happened before, because I have comments to make if, if this does not work, uh, to go to the table.
So you want to defer?
Uh, defer is fine, uh, defer would be fine. I'm, a motion to defer, uh, until we have an assessment, uh, with recommendations provided from Baker Donaldson.
What's, what date would you say?
Uh, we were told, uh, 30 days, so we could defer for 30 days, um, we need a date that would be.
So May 7th?
Attorney Taylor's, May 7th. Set. Yeah, that one makes sense, to me, so is that a agenda meeting, or is that a, doesn't guess it matters, maybe?
It's a regular meeting, we can do it in recess.
To May 7th? Um, provided we have, uh, a set of recommendations, yes, May 7th, defer.
Chairman, you need a second on that.
I do, you need a second.
Second.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Let me remind you, um, to, to table it is fine, to the, to the, defer to that may start, may date that you say is fine, but let me remind you, there is a step in between that you all have not considered as of yet, it hasn't been brought before you as of yet, and that probably won't be brought to you until next week's agenda meeting, and that is the, the information that you all just received. You haven't acted on it. Am I, am I making sense?
Well, maybe another couple of weeks. I think it's.
So the, so, so the day's the ninth, so the seventh would be good.
You won't, you won't be acting.
I guess we had always deferred again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You won't even be considering your first discussion as a result of our conversation earlier, your first discussion won't be until the 9th of April, which would be next week's agenda meeting. You won't act unless you do it in recess on the 9th, you won't act until the 16th of April. And so that shortens your, it shortens the time for any actions to be done by others other than the commission. Am I making sense?
So you're saying we should take this beyond the 7th of May?
Yes, sir, in order to afford the time that you all heard would be required.
So, May the 14th is a agenda meeting?
Yes, sir, or a recess meeting.
Well, well, it's gonna be a combined meeting, because the following week, we will not be in session.
Okay.
So it's gonna be a combined meeting on the 14th.
All right.
So, 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 so if we take that, and we've got a motion to defer by Commissioner Sharp to the 7th, if we can change that to the 14th, to be heard and voted on the same day.
So moved.
Then, so, that'd be your motion, and Commissioner Beck, would you second it?
Yes.
Okay. So that will be May the 14th. Okay, so that's the motion that's currently on the table, so, uh. Other lights are on, should I go, the other lights come back to you, Commissioner Sharp?
That'd be fine.
Okay. Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. This body acts collectively as one entity, and I tend to want to protect each one of these commissioners' rights to be heard, and if there is a report where a commissioner has been asked to do a, perform a function, it just seems right to let that commissioner have their say. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Baker.
Just, Mr. Attorney. So we have a 48-hour rule on, on, on creating, um, resolutions?
Just, but, but, on acting on resolutions, just 48-hour notice.
Yeah, yeah, but that, that could be circumvented if something comes up. Correct?
I would not recommend you circumvent that, that's, that's the public's right to know what you're doing.
Just wondering how, because of the importance of this, and I don't care, we have full discussion in public, for sure, but because of the importance of this, would it make, not make sense to go ahead and, and do a resolution today?
Commissioner, that has not been notified to the public.
I, I realize, that's why I asked the question, is there an exception?
If you all consider it an emergency, and that's, if you all consider it an emergency.
I mean, personally, I think it's of the highest importance, so, you can call that whatever you want, I say it's extremely high importance, but whatever y'all want to do, but I just think, you know, we could do the resolution right here, talk about it right here, we have, we have the person who can talk about it right here.
We don't have a printed resolution, but you can certainly hear the discussion and.
But I, I mean, I'll defer to all y'all, but I mean, I just think this is so important to get us kid, get that 30 days to move forward. I think we should do it now, I just did.
It's up to this body.
So right now, we got a motion on the table to defer this to the 14th of May. You're talking about doing a resolution, a separate resolution on our conversation earlier?
I am.
Okay. Okay. So Attorney Taylor, we need to finish this conversation, this, which is on the table, then it would open us up to a different conversation. And the current conversation we have on the table right now is deferring, 425-5, deferring it to May the 14th. Commissioner Highlander, uh, Commissioner Shipley, I'm sorry, Shipley.
I got one question, how much time do we have left for notifying people? Is it two weeks?
Chairman, can I speak?
That's all I need to ask.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, I'll answer Commissioner Shipley's question and go ahead and say what I was gonna say, I think we have, I believe we have 15 days from today to notify everybody affected by the HIPAA breach, and I'd like to give context to my belief that we need this reorganization to take place in a timely manner. We have 60 days from notification of breach to communicate with those who were affected, 15 days are remaining. County was notified, notified, and this timeline was clarified via communication from the county attorney's office yesterday by Dana Beltrama. County was notified on February 24th of this year of a breach. My office was not notified until March 11th in a memo that all of you received. Uh, I would suggest to you that the risk management team as being currently operated and managed is not doing a sufficient job, I have concerns about, uh, the expediency with which this was dealt by the task force and others. Commissioner Sharp knew about this on February 24th, why in the world, for 18 days, knowing that the clock was ticking, uh, this would not have been reported, uh, communicated whatsoever to our office or to the rest of y'all, I have, I cannot understand, but we only have 15 days, I can guarantee you that if we, if we will reorganize this in a way that I can properly conduct the county's business, that David Roddy, working with the county attorney's office, working with risk management, working with all of y'all, we will hammer this home and get it done in a timely manner. I cannot guarantee you that will happen otherwise, because we lost 18 days right from the beginning, inexplicably confirmed in an email to me yesterday, you all may have been on that same communication with Dana Beltrama, but from, just to reiterate, from February 24th, when the county was notified, no communication to the mayor's office until March 11th, that's when we had a memo subsequently, a legal meeting last week, and we are losing precious time, and of course, we can always reconsider these things moving forward, but I would say, given that time is. And of course, we can always reconsider these things moving forward, but I would say, given that time is of the essence on this HIPAA breach, let's trust David Roddy to work with the county attorney's office to get this thing done.
Commissioner Shipley, is that, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, James.
Attorney Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, the county attorney's office was notified about this breach on February the twenty-fourth. It was not until March the fifth, three o'clock in the afternoon, we knew the gravement of this breach by the numbers. We knew that there was a breach, but the, the key number, as you all have been told, is five hundred. We found out the number on the afternoon of March the fifth, and our office has been involved every day since then in doing the steps that are necessary, including having the notification, which Commissioner Shipley asked about, ready for distribution. We had one version ready last week, and since last week, we have been trying to get agreement from the signers of the notification as to what the language would, would be. We have that, another version or the latest version today. So to answer Commissioner Shipley's question, the notification can go out as of today if we get the appropriate signatures with everyone's agreement. So the indication that the office has been dilly-dallying is, is grossly in error. We have been working on this in every phase, including trying to get other information, ever since we knew of the magnitude of this, which was March the fifth. Thank you.
I think by our agreement earlier, those signatures will be done this morning.
Hopefully, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, I see no more lights. No one standing for public comment. So, Mr. Clerk, we're gonna do a roll call. Roll call is on deferring till May the fourteenth. Okay, is that clear? So, and Commissioner Sharp, presenter, Commissioner Beck seconded that.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey? Mr. Graham?
No.
Mr. Hilton? No. Dr. Highlander? Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
No.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Chairman?
Matter how I vote, it passed, so, with six votes. Is it that? Okay, I wrote down an extra one. Five, five right now?
Yes.
Okay. I will vote no.
No, six. Yes, five.
Commissioner Sharp?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, since the deferral failed, and we will be voting on a kind of impromptu move here to place risk management and HR under the chief operating officer's purview. I'm gonna have to talk about a few things that I was hoping not to talk about today. I would like to start by saying what would help in understanding the timeline of why things happen certain ways would be to start with a question and not an accusation. We've also known about four other breaches over the course of the past year in Hamilton County with regard to HIPAA. I suspect that the mayor and his staff would not want to discuss those breaches publicly. And as a representative of this county on this board, there has been no discussion of them publicly to date because of the liability that it presents. One violation, uh, according to HIPAA, also is the intimidation, threatening, or exposing of compliance workers, particularly HIPAA compliance privacy officers, um, is a HIPAA violation. Intimidating privacy officers is a HIPAA violation. Threatening privacy officers is a HIPAA violation. Creating a hostile work environment is a violation. And moving our risk management and in turn, our HIPAA privacy officer under the chief operating officer, is placing our employees directly in the line of fire of those who have been hostile to them over the course of the past couple of years. That's a violation. That's a knowing violation, because everyone on this board was informed of that violation, not once, but twice, in private legal meetings. And now there's been a move to place this individual under the direct report of those who have threatened and intimidated her. I will not support that. I will support the people that work for Hamilton County and a safe working environment for them. And just to explain a little bit, this is a very difficult position to be in. I am a fiduciary of this county. I have a fiscal responsibility to this county. I also have a fiscal response, I also have a responsibility to those that elected me to serve on the, for this county, in this position. This move creates liability for the county. And I am asking now that this move fail because it will in turn create additional liability, as we are all well aware, and we're, we're, we're told as much, not once, but twice. I don't, I don't know that I can say it any more clearly. I will not be supporting this resolution for reasons I've stated and others, and that's all, Chairman.
Okay, I just want to remind everybody, because I got lights on, that we're currently at the amended resolution of amending the verbiage of transferring this department from the attorney's office, not to HR, but to the COO, so I want to make sure it bears in since we're at that current juncture that amended. Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I've got a question. I'm not sure, Chairman, you should go to you or to whom. I have great respect for the COO office. If we do this move now, and then the legal, and then we, we look into the legal advice that we're possibly seeking, look at the legal advice that we're possibly seeking, would we have to come to another resolution if they, if they give an alternate opinion that we choose to accept? Or would it, would it stay there? You follow what I'm saying?
If we get, if we get a recommendation that the structure needs to go elsewhere, then that will come back to this body as a resolution that will be sponsored by somebody to, to change it from that point. So this, this potentially could change based off of a recommendation as well.
Okay, so, so this would not, this could be temporary or it could be permanent?
Could be.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. Question, was a commissioner asked to chair a committee to study this issue?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Mackey. I think you know the answer to that.
And monies have been spent enlisting the support of outside counsel.
Not yet.
Well, I'm on a committee, and that committee is to, you know, study this issue. And there was a national expert who testified to us. And, you know, we're still, like this morning, we're, 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 we're enlisting outside counsel. Today is Baker Donaldson, and they, uh, they're gonna help us sort this out. But until we get that report, it seems like to me we're jumping the gun. Seems like to me we will wait on that expert opinion, that, that advice, that counsel, before we proceed. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yeah, one further question. Regardless of what we do here today, Baker and Donaldson can work with the new group wherever it goes. You're gonna be giving the same opinions that you would give today in a month. Your job is to make sure wherever it's at is being done right, correct? Yes, sir. Is that okay, Chairman?
Sure, I think it's fine. I think, I think if Baker Donaldson becomes an employee of the county, they, they would work with any department.
Any department, okay, that answered my question, thanks.
Okay, no more lights up here, Ms. Cooper?
Thank you, Chairman. I tried to keep myself silent, but I just couldn't do it anymore. I was present at the meeting that seems to have been referred to multiple times. Not only were the statements that were made unfair, they're patently false. That meeting was attended by four of the members of the commission that are on the dais right now. And the only person being harassed or bullied at that meeting was the chief of staff, Claire McVeigh. So I, I just wanted to stand up and defend her actions that day and ever since. I, I don't know how else to say it, but she has done nothing but do her job to the best of her abilities and does not deserve the treatment that she has been given. I'm not exactly sure where the line has been crossed, but it's not on her part, and that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Beck?
I'll for the vote.
We have no more lights, so I guess that was perfect timing. The vote right now is the amendment to change it from HR to COO. And that was sponsored by Commissioner Hilton and seconded by Commissioner Smith. So, Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander? Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
No.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, so four twenty-five dash five is approved as amended.
Well, the amendment was approved. Now you'll be voting on the main motion.
So the, so, okay, so Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Commissioner Hilton, second. No lights, no standing, no one standing, so roll call, as amended.
We have a motion by Commissioner Graham, seconded by Commissioner Chauncey on the original motion. Is that correct?
As of, this is, this is the new motion, as amended. So the original unamended was Commissioner Graham and Commissioner Chauncey. But approved as amended would be Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Hilton. Well, I guess it'd be original, it'd be original, I'm sorry. I'm going in circles here, so we're fine. Commissioner Graham, Commissioner Chauncey.
Okay.
My apologies, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, just want to do it right. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander? Pass. Mr. Mackey?
Pass.
Mr. Sharp?
No.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Did you turn your mic on, please, sir, so I could?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Okay, so four twenty-five dash five passes as amended. Commissioner Baker? If I could, with everyone's indulgence, I'd, I'd like to throw out a resolution to add, since we're done with our committee as a whole. And if I can, just introduce it, and then if y'all like it, we can move on. Yeah, it's of the highest importance. So I'm calling it a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter agreement with Baker Donaldson to assess the Office of Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, the American With Disabilities Act, Equal Employment Opportunity Act, and other federal and state laws. That would be my resolution.
Second.
For what amount? For, uh, up to forty thousand dollars, thank you. Baker has submitted. Commissioner Highlander?
What is it?
Four twenty-five dash thirteen. We got Baker give the motion, submitted, and Commissioner Highlander seconding that motion.
Ed, ma'am?
Sure.
We have Mr. Connor here from Baker Donaldson, who can kind of give an overview of the, the act for the public. I mean, not the act, the resolution, uh, just in general, what, what we intend to do. Is that okay?
Go ahead. Mr. Connor?
Yes, Connor with Baker Donaldson. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, our proposal was really to assess the overall structure with respect to county government in terms of compliance with HIPAA, not only HIPAA, but other federal regulations and laws, to give an assessment of what I would call a level set on where you stand in terms of compliance, things of that nature. It's not a compliance audit, but it is to give you a fair assessment, and the mayor's office a fair assessment, of where you are today. And then to make recommendations to the fact that you're fine, if, if that's what the analysis says. If there's some tweaks that need to be made, we'll suggest those. If there's more of a structural analysis and a structural change that is recommended with respect to the structure for reporting and things of that nature, we'll be doing that. But until we, and what this will entail, will entail actual interviews with associates in my firm, having with individuals within the organization, the county government, that are in charge of certain areas where there are critical informations kept. So, once we're able to do that, and we'll be able to give you a final report on what our assessment is with recommendations to go forward. Glad, looking forward to work with Mr. Roddy, uh, the mayor's office chairman, and the other departments in that regard. And what we would ask is, everybody be patient. This is something that is gonna take a little time, and we'll, I'll give some recommendations on what, how we do it, go about it. But what I'd like to do, if this is passed, is I'll, we'll have a couple of informational sessions and meetings so that we can get it, get everything lined up in the most efficient manner possible. It's my hope that we're able to do this within thirty days. It's my objective to do that. But I will, if it turns out we need a little more time, I'll, we'll let you know well in advance. But that's really the substance of it, and be glad to answer any questions.
Well, the only reason I introduced this today is because it gets the ball rolling. It gets us moving in a direction that we have confidence, obviously with the reputation of Baker Donaldson and what you do, the, the thousands of lawyers that you have that are specialized. And just due to the gravity of this, I'd like to get this going. That's okay. That's okay.
Okay, Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. Because money is gonna be spent, I just wanna make sure there's no conflict of interest between Baker and Donaldson and Commissioner Baker.
I wish there were.
I called him Chip Henderson the other day, so I think we're safe.
Commissioner, Commissioner Graham?
The money to pay for this is coming from... I mean, it's easy to sit up here and just start doling out orders and spending money, but, but we, since it's come up so quickly and we've not done our due diligence, we have no, I mean, is it coming from the legal department? Is it coming from our fund balance? Is it coming from, I mean, where's it coming from?
Good question. Where would you recommend, Lee?
Well, actually, that was gonna be one of my questions, is do we wanna amend the budget for that? Or does a department, I mean, it could come out of whichever department y'all feel, if it's county attorney, or risk management, or county commission, or, you know, or...
We could make it the county mayor now that it's in the mayor's office with the chief of staff?
We could.
Well, again, there, there are a lot of right answers, but that's what I wanna hear, is, or we amend the budget? Which basically would mean...
I prefer not to amend the budget.
I thought I had it for...
You do.
You're still talking.
I understand what you mean, I understand.
Yeah.
Well, hang on a second, you know, this, I think Commissioner Baker was asking your, answering your question, since it was his bill where he thought that money should come from. So, good, that's a great point. Commissioner Graham?
Can I?
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
My, my other statement is, I, I just wanna be sure that we realize what we're voting on here. We're not, I, I'm not against it. I'm not against more eyes looking at county government and helping us get better than we are. You know, I have no, no problem with that. But this doesn't handle the problem that the mayor stood right here at the microphone and told us that we have 15 days to address. What, what Baker Donaldson will be doing is giving us an assessment, like you said before, of a baseline where we're at and what they recommend where we're going, going forward. So, this, we're, we're kinda mixing two issues, and they're two separate issues. They're completely separate issues. We have a, we have a, an issue with a 15-day deadline that we have to get addressed, and then we have this issue finding out where we are. So, I just wanna be sure that we're all clear on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you. If I could ask Mr. Connor another question, if I may, or just... He's already given his name and address. He doesn't need to do that again, does he, Chairman? Uh, Mr. Connor, it's my understanding, and I've talked to a couple of people that I know within the legal world, that you do have some people on your staff, both, both in Tennessee and nationally, that are experts, particularly experts in this field, am I correct?
Yes, Commissioner Highlander, we have, we don't like to say experts or specialists, but from the standpoint of people with knowledge of the issue and how to present this to you, once we obtain the information, yes. I, I would not be up here if I didn't think we had the professionals to do the job. And Alyssa Chessler is a partner of mine, shareholder in our Nashville office, and she'll be working with two associates in our, one in our Houston office and one in our Nashville office that are very familiar with these type of inquiries and also in making recommendations of that long this nature.
Well, an attorney friend of mine in Nashville said that Alyssa, who she thought was probably the best in this state, and they had maybe one of the best in the country. So, I know attorneys have expertise. Most attorneys that I know are extremely intelligent.
Present company excluded.
No, 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 not, no, not excluded at all, but they have fields of expertise.
That's correct.
And just like doctors, heart surgeons, brain surgeons, whatever. And so, I, I feel comfortable doing that. And I have, thank you, sir. And, Mr. Chairman, I have one other que, I don't know if it's a question or a comment. It's been, Mr. Graham made an excellent choice that we need to get this ball rolling on answering this and getting things out. Or do we have a resolution that hopefully ready to go out in the next day or two? Do we not, from our legal office, to take care of the compliance issue?
As far as the resolution?
No, no, as far as sending out, uh, I think, I think... Yes, notification. We're, we're, hopefully, we're ready to send that out and not be delinquent on that, are we not? If we can get it approved?
Well, I think our goal this morning, the conversation that we had earlier, was it was to be done this morning.
Correct. That, that's, I just wanted to state that, that we're not sitting on our haunches here. We're hoping to get this done. Thank you.
Mr. Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to address my colleague from District Nine's comments there. I've already signed three letters to reach notification letters, but apparently, it's, it's been changed three or four different times or more, and so apparently, there's a new draft that we're trying to... I was hoping it was gonna go out on Wednesday of last week, but there's been some difference of opinion, I suppose, as to how direct the communication is. But anyways, yeah, hopefully, we'll be able to get a letter signed and out today. Thank you. Oh, by the way, I think a significant portion of the list of individuals has been worked through. It's not complete. Access to that information has been somewhat limited, but it's, it's being done and should be complete before too long. Thank you.
Okay, see no more lights and no one standing? So, this is for Resolution 425-13, sponsored by Mr. Baker, seconded by Commissioner Highlander.
Money question be included in this resolution?
It absolutely should.
And what was the answer on that?
So, Commissioner Graham brought up a great one. So, where's the money coming from?
Lee, where, where do you recommend?
Well, it has not been included in anyone's budget prior, so probably, I would recommend amend fund balance and pay for it from there, or to amend the budget.
So, it's the end of the year. There's gotta be money in a pot. You know where the, you know where the pots are, so let's find the right pot.
Again, if, if your option is, and it can be included in the resolution to pay it from existing general fund monies, that's an acceptable solution, and we will, we will figure out where to pay it from.
Yeah, well, I see, I see the mayor might have a solution.
I don't know that I'm gonna have a better solution than Lee, but I'm gonna make mine shorter than Lee might make his solution. I would just amend the budget, pull it from general fund, put it in risk management, be done with it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's it.
So, that'll become a part of Resolution 13?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Baker will make sure it gets added.
And if this is adopted, can we get a resolution drawn from the attorney's office?
Absolutely.
And also, Resolution Number Five, I think, needs to...
Yes, sir, the amendment.
Okay. Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, so 425-13 passes. Commissioner Hilton?
Thank you, sir. This is not as large of an emergency, but I also would like to walk something on. At my high school, East Hamilton, the only one that I represent, we generally send boys to Boys State. It's a program put on by the American Legion. Unfortunately, the American Legion does not have the funds to send our children this year. I was wanting to walk on $1,000 from my discretionary travel budget to cover their cost to go to Boys State. I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you so much.
So, Commissioner Hilton, so $1,000 is discretionary money? And, uh, let's see, the motion, Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion, so would that be 425-14?
14, correct.
Okay. Could you make sure?
Yes, I, I will, and, uh, East, what is gonna happen, East Hamilton High School is going to front the money for the American Legion, because our lead time is not quick enough to get it there, and we will reimburse them. If that's okay with y'all?
Add that in your resolution, please.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Highlander?
I'd like to commend Commissioner Hilton for, for bringing this up. Boys State and Girls State are two outstanding programs. My daughters both went to Girls State when they were in high school, and it is just an excellent... I understand Commissioner Baker may have gone to Boys State in Ohio when he was there, and so, it's, look where he is today. But even so...
It teaches high school juniors about local, yes, local county and state government. I think that's one area we're lacking in civics, and so, any, anyone we can educate in that area is fantastic.
We had a daughter that went and had, had a TBA for an assignment and ended up having a small group of Sandra Day O'Connor, so, on, on women in government. So, I mean, you know, it's high level, and I'm thankful that you brought that up.
Okay, see no more lights, no one standing? Uh, Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey? Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We'll also need a resolution on that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So, Commissioner Hilton, if y'all make sure he gets it. All right, so 425-14 passes. So, Commissioner Hilton, we got 425-6 and 425-7.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Madam Clerk?
I'll read them together, bundle.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's, let's do that. Bundle them, please.
Resolution 425-6, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into and execute a lease agreement between Hamilton County and the Forgotten Child Fund for office and storage space located in the Harrison Recreation Center at 5637 Highway 58, Chattanooga, Tennessee. Resolution 425-7, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into and execute a lease agreement between Hamilton County and the University of Tennessee for Office and Community Function Space located at the J. Merrill Crowley Building, 6183 Adamson Circle, Chattanooga, Tennessee.
Second. Commissioner Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one small observation about the Harrison Recreation Center. Didn't we dedicate those fields out there to Bobby Dunn? Didn't we do that, uh, can I ask Commissioner Highlander?
Yeah.
May I?
Yeah, yes, sir. I was at the ceremony where we did that, and I would, since you brought that up, I would like to request that the Bobby Dunn Field sign be replaced. It was evidently knocked down.
That's what I'm...
And I would, I really appreciate if, maybe if the county could get together with, uh, with the people out there and put an appropriate sign up, recognizing the county recognized that, the county approved it. Uh, I think you and I were both at the dedication ceremony, and I spoke there. So, we would like to get that sign back up, recognizing Mr. Dunn's longtime involvement with the youth in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I've gotten a lot of calls on that.
I, I have as well.
Because Bobby Dunn worked real closely with Commissioner Mackey and me, with those young people up there. A lot of the people are from our district.
Right.
And so, when we had those complaints about that sign, we wanna make sure that we get that up. And it's been down too long.
It, it has been down. Evidently, I was told that someone ran into it about many, many months ago, tore it down, and so, it's not been erected, and I think it'd be great if we could get it back up. I also, several districts are impacted by that community center and, and that ball, ball fields. Dr. Mackey's yours and mine as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do we have any more lights?
Commissioner Beck was one, and Commissioner Highlander is the other.
All right, thank you.
I guess, we'll do, Commissioner Mackey made the motion, Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion, so we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, so Resolution 425-6 and 425-7 pass. Mr. Mackey?
Uh, point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Highlander made reference to a sign. Are we, did we say we're gonna put that sign back up? Thank you.
Okay, we're moving to Roads Committee. Commissioner Chauncey with 425-8.
Madam Clerk, 425-8, please.
Resolution 425-8, a resolution for the acceptance of a proposal by the Tennessee Department of Transportation to construct a project described as Bridge Over S C S X Railroad LM 0.86 in Chattanooga on Route SR 320.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Chauncey made the motion. Mr. Graham seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, 425-8 passes. Moving to findings, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Clerk, please read 425-9.
Resolution 425-9, a resolution of the Hamilton County Tennessee Commission adopting certain fees within the Division of Public Works, including fees under Development Services and the Highway Department.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval. Mr. Chair, you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, Commissioner Smith made the motion, Commissioner Beck seconded the motion. I've got a comment on this particular resolution, because I know it's about charging more fees to developers, and I'd like for, uh, Mr. Nathan, if, if you could answer a question for me. Because I think our, our goal is to, uh, I guess, improve income for infrastructure, things like that. So, so if you look at these, these fees, what is it gonna do to the everyday homeowner if they wanna add a garage, or add a building, or whatever?
Uh, Nathan Janeway, Director of Development Services, 1250 Market Street. These fees will only be assessed on new developments. So, anything where we have to inspect right of way, where we have to inspect sidewalks, where we have to inspect new roads in front of it, that's, that's what this is intended to be charged on. If you own, if you're a, a single individual, you're building a house on a piece of property, and you're not affecting right of way, there's no inspections in the road, this will not affect you.
Okay. That's my question. Commissioner Highlander?
Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Janeway, while you're here, this is a parallel question to that. I really appreciate the mayor's involvement in the 5.8 million, the race for the, for the roads. And some people in my community ask how far we have progressed on that. If you could just, would it be appropriate to ask now, if he could just give us an assessment of what's been done so far?
Sure, it's quick.
Yeah. We've completed a preliminary engineering report on the idea of connecting Hilltop Drive down to Volkswagen Drive. That report is complete. The estimate was 22 and a half million dollars to do that. We've also, we're in a design phase on the roundabout on Hunter Road at the schools. We're also working through a design phase at Short Tail Springs and Snow Hill Road.
Thank you. I, I was aware of those, but thank you for making the public aware.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Graham?
Mr. Chairman, I had the same question that Chairman Eversall had, and it was answered, but, but the follow-up question to that is, the verbiage, and can I ask the Attorney? The, the verbiage in this resolution doesn't clarify what Nathan just said about existing homeowners and just, just affecting developers, that kind of thing. So, does this verbiage need to be changed or cleaned up to where it rectifies that?
It, so it does say subdivisions in there, in the language.
Several people live in subdivisions. I mean, we, you're talking about new construction. I mean, you're talking about new construction, correct? So doesn't the word new construction need to be in there?
If that's the intent of the commission, we'll put it in there. We'll get Mr. Janeway.
We don't want to hurt existing, and I think that's where Chairman Eversaw was going. We don't want to hurt existing residents going forward. So I'm only one vote, but I think new construction needs to be added to that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If that's your sentiment, we'll...
I have no issues with that.
Okay, see no more lights? No one standing. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Beck seconded the motion. So Mr. Clerk, roll call. Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, with proper wording.
Was that an amendment? Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Dr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, 425-9 passes.
Mr. Chair, so I was reading the backup paperwork. Madam Clerk, 425-10, please.
Resolution 425-10, a resolution to waive the procurement rules and authorize the county mayor to transfer one surplus vehicle to Fire Rehab Services in Marion County, Tennessee.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Second. Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded the motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call. Hang on, Mr. Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to express my appreciation to the mayor for looking out for my home county. I was born and raised in Marion County. Thank you.
No other lights, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Eversaw?
Yes. Resolution is 425-10 passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, without objection, please bundle 425-11 and -12.
Resolution 425-11, a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2025 general fund revenue and expenditures budgets for the Office of Emergency Management by $6,400 to accept funding from the state. A resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute the governmental grant contract and to accept reimbursement of $121,198.49 from the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency for debris removal costs resulting from severe weather on May 8th through 9th, 2024.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconded the motion. See no lights, no one standing. Per comment, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey? Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, resolutions 425-11 and 425-12 pass. That ends our resolutions. We're going to announcements. Commissioner Shipley?
No announcement.
Commissioner Baker?
Just like to welcome my old colleague back here, Catherine Jeter. Welcome.
It's good to see you. Commissioner Jeter? Good seat. Commissioner Smith?
No announcements, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mackey?
No announcements.
Mr. Beck?
No announcements.
Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Chair. I don't, it's not really an announcement, but I'd just like to publicly recognize the Chattanooga Mocs men's basketball team for making it to the NIT finals. And I don't know if I misunderstood this at the end of the game. I think a lot of us are a little sluggish today from staying up watching the ballgame last night. But if I, unless I'm mistaken, they said, the announcer stated that Honor Huff set the all-time three-point single-season scoring record for the NCAA last night, which is massive. I just wanted to acknowledge that. It's been a big, a big part of the Mocs' success this year, and that's an enormous accomplishment. So thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Hilton?
Thank you. I wanted to let all of you know that Matt Foles has already responded to me. He is going to take care of the Bobby Dunn sign at Harrison Recreation. So that's taken care of. I also wanted to say thank you to each of you for letting me walk that resolution on to take care of the East Hamilton boys going to Boys State. I really appreciate that. On the 26th of this month, we're going to have a community breakfast. Friends of East Brainerd, we're going to add Apison, Friends of Apison, hopefully into the name soon. It's at 1067 Graysill Road, 8:00 AM. Linda Moss Mines will be our speaker this month. Hope to see some of you there. And also wanted to say thank you to the Highway Department and the citizens out in Apison for helping perform a roadside cleanup. We gathered 65 bags of garbage, four tires, one bumper, and a partridge in a pear tree. So I really appreciate them. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Mackey?
Thanks, Chair. Mr. Hilton, are you going to get ring, are we going to get rings for that team?
Which team are you speaking of?
Boys State. They're going to win it?
I hope, I hope they win. Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Chauncey? No one else, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. I, to follow up on what Commissioner Hilton said, the president of the Harrison Ruritan Club and his wife landed a cleanup on Champion Road and last week, and they picked up an entire pickup load piled up and tied down of trash. I tried North Hickory Valley myself and thought it was going to die when a car came by and when I was on the very edge of the road. But let me encourage all the citizens. Please don't, please don't trash Tennessee. Please don't trash Hamilton County. We, I'm begging you, don't do that. It's, also, Chairman, I'm not sure if this is appropriate time or not, but we talked about an open records request last week, and I've still got a question in my mind. The old policy was that after one hour, we charge for redactions and research. And the open record, the Tennessee Open Records people suggested we not charge. We could be, we have a good defense if we follow no charge at all. But I mean, I looked at when I was on the school board, sometimes it's 20, 30, 40 hours by our staff people. But do we need, should we continue the policies that's been in place? Or should we have no charge? And I know our people probably need to know this. I don't, who do I need to ask that?
Attorney Taylor.
Mr. Taylor, would you answer that for me? Give us, give us your legal opinion?
Commissioners, that has been the policy since, well, in the previous administration, that we do charge because of the time that's generally expended by personnel and staff to retrieve the requested documents, to inspect them and redact from those before allowing them to be viewed. Not, we're not talking about those that are being copied and provided, but those that are being viewed. And as Commissioner Highlander says, yes, the Council for Office of Open Records does say that we're not supposed to do that. But previously, the commission had decided that because of the amount of time expended by our personnel, there need to be a charge. Otherwise, they may spend most of their time doing work for somebody else and not doing what the counties employing them to do. This decision is yours to make, to make.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Graham?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to reiterate what actually Commissioner Baker said earlier in asking his questions, that being that this is an assessment year, some people's taxes are going to go up and down because of their assessment. But we are not, and I've heard the mayor make this statement publicly, we are not proposing a tax increase for this budget cycle. I too, as Commissioner Baker said, I have had several calls just this week about their assessments, both good and bad, but mostly bad. And I just wanted it to be clear for my constituents that they heard it from me that we are not, or I won't be supporting a tax increase in this budget cycle.
Thank you, sir.
Attorney Taylor?
Just to remind you, a continuation of the legal meeting after you finish.
Okay. Mayor Wong?
I too stayed up late watching the Mocs. That was exciting. Also would like to call your attention to tonight. I'm not a soccer fan, but I am pretty intrigued by the fact that our two local professional soccer clubs are playing each other. I will say that I am the proud father of a Little Red Wolf. My daughter plays on the 2016 select soccer team. And I spend a lot of time and money affiliated with that club, even though the mayor of the city has referred to that team as the team from East Ridge. Some of us take quite a bit of pride in East Ridge, Tennessee. But this, this Hamilton County battle taking place at Findlay ought to be quite a lot of fun.
Okay, a couple of things from the chair. Number one, area nine planning meeting scheduled for Monday, the 7th, at the Highway 58 Fire Training Center at 6:00 PM to update on some planning, area plans, asking the general public to attend. Times Free Press reported, and Commissioner Graham mentioned a while ago, no, no tax increases this year, which is awesome. When will we see the budgets?
Lee, Chairman Smith, y'all have hammered out a specific timeline. The last I heard, there was only a little bit of variability based on when the commission would be in town. Let's see, I'll read in real time.
Lee, is that the, is that the items in red with the TBD on it?
Well, there is, there is the fact that we don't have confirmation of the date that Dr. Robertson will present to y'all. We're looking right at the middle of May. In the range of the 16th and 19th, and it's dependent on when the commission will be in town. Is the commission here on the 21st? And that's one of the questions based on the...
What, no, is that right? We're going on the 21st. Is that correct, Mike? We're going the 20th, 21st, 22nd, I believe.
Got it. Right in that range, we'll hammer out our details with the finance chairman. Get back to you with clarification. We're still in the planning process, but we had been hounded by that question. And I know that people are, you know, have some sticker shock about the new value of their home. And so it's worth re-education on this four-year cycle that just because the value of your home went up does not necessarily mean that the property tax bill will go up, and we're doing our part to prevent that from happening this year.
The last thing, last thing I want to mention is, is during the budget discussion, there's something that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, and we had a Monday night get-together and talk about what we should look like in 2015, 2016, and so forth, that Mr. Janeway was graciously... And one of the things that came out of that discussion was, is, in my thought, as we're looking at the future, that new growth money each year, we need to be setting aside that money so we help future generations. And I gave you an example.[1591.34]